We're gonna start soon.
Okay.
Thank you. I'd like to call committee to order at 7:01. Uh, we actually have Sue Tremblay, our ninth school board member who's not here tonight, but is connecting to us via the phone tonight, so she will be teleconferencing in. If we could do the pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Phone in the silence. Thank you. All right. We're actually gonna start the correspondence folder around. We actually have, um, oh, a letter that you sent on to the Hillsborough Department of Corrections for all the great work they did in repairing and painting the SAU building. We have a letter to MCR Medical for a donation that was made to the school district, as well as substitution reports for the week before vacation. Yep? So we'll start that around. While that goes around, is there any combination good news?
Do you have something? Go ahead.
Okay. Um, next week on Thursday is a benefit concert for the grand piano. Mr. and Mrs. Gartner will be featured, as well as some students here at the high school. Um, over break, the boys' basketball team won their Christmas tournament. And, um, on January 12th, NHS will have its formal induction for about thirty juniors who are accepted this year. Also, I was told to remind you all that Phantom of the Opera tickets are starting to go on sale this week.
Excellent. Thank you.
Ken Martin, who is in charge of the band at Mountain View Middle School, has asked me to share this information with you guys. He said, "I'm happy to announce that we have had three students make the NHBDA Middle School Honors Band." And the NHBDA, if you didn't know, stands for New Hampshire Band Directors Association. The students that made it are Gabrielle Brock, uh, Block, sorry, on flute, Cody Murphy on trumpet, and Mary Collamore on trumpet. Uh, the students have several musical passages that they are to work on without any assistance from Mr. Martin or anyone else. They have two months to work on the passages, and then they have to record themselves playing those pieces. Their recordings are sent to NHBDA, where they'll listen to and grade it for submission. They only pick twenty s- I'm sorry, they only pick sixty students to be in the honors band and ten flute players to be in the honors flute choir. So Cody and Mary are in the honors band, and Gabby made the flute choir.
Excellent. Next?
It's vacation.
Yes, Sue. Right ahead.
Could you adjust the volume on your phone? I can barely hear you folks.
I have the volume all the way up right now.
Oh, now I can hear ya.
Okay. Any other combinations of good news?
I just heard, I guess, that the hockey team just beat Hanover in their last game.
Excellent. Do you know what the score was?
No, I wasn't there.
Four to one.
Four to one? Okay. Diane?
I went to Maple Avenue, fourth graders' holiday concert before the break on the 21st. It was wonderful. They had it here at the Hebrew Auditorium. The kids did a great job. Absolutely, Mr. Landano, great job.
All right, seeing none, and I haven't forgotten about the approval of our minutes. We'll go to public comment. Any public comment tonight? All right, seeing none. We will jump right on to comedy, I mean, excuse me, on to approval of our minutes of 12:20. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of 12:10? By Jenny, do I have a second?
A second.
By Diane, any corrections, amendments? Diane?
Um, I just had one amendment in the section we're reviewing, Megan Bizarro's presentation.
Yeah?
I had, um, asked the question regarding any attempts to have the breakfast program actually run in the black, and, um, her reply was about the numbers, and she gave a good explanation for it. I just noticed it was missing from the minutes, and I'd wanted to see if we could pop that in. Anybody who didn't see the meeting or wasn't here may want to know, um, why they're not, it's not looking at running in the black right now.
Okay. Any other adjustments? All right, seeing none. All in favor of approving the motion? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, against abstaining. Sue, are you, what's your vote? We have two abstentions, Kent Nolan and Sue Tremblay. Motion passes, uh, 7-0-2. Excellent. All right, we can jump right to standing committee reports. Admin and Finance, Hank?
Okay, I would like to move the manifest in the amount of $897,790.
Do I have a second to that motion, please?
A second.
Oh, and forty-one cents, I'm told to amend to. Eight ninety-seven, seven nine oh, forty-one.
Fifty, fifty.
Every penny counts.
Somebody would be short change forty-one cents. So, uh, can I have a second to that motion, please? By Diane? Want to run down the synopsis of the highlights?
Sure, the highlights were payroll of $486,610. Taxes, $157,684. Benefits, $98,400. In addition to that, Fuller Oil, $2,300. Gale Group, that was Science Text, $6,900. Copying and Business, the icon, was $7,600. PSNH, $21,500. And, uh, special ed transportation was $5,400.
Anybody have any questions? Fuller was $20,300. All right, all in favor of the motion? And that, hello? Yes? Sue, how would you like to vote?
Yes.
In favor, if that motion passes, 9-0-0. Thank you.
Keith Ray has informed me that, uh, as of January the first, we've gone through new IRS mileage. It's up to a whole penny to fifty-one cents. Go crazy, folks.
Thank you. That only affects the employees and the district. Actually, all three school districts are now using the IRS mileage, I believe, now.
Yes.
So the SAU uses the IRS mileage, too, unless they have a contracted flat V for the use of their vehicle. All righty, anything else from Admin and Finance tonight?
Well, I assume everybody's got the, uh, cost savings on the, uh...
Cost avoidance for Honeywell? Yeah, just came in this afternoon.
It was, uh, from July 1st, '09 to June 10th, the savings were eight thou- yeah, eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine. That was a guarantee. The actual savings were a hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-six, which was an overage of thirty thousand, fifty-seven.
Thirty thousand additional savings that we had not guaranteed.
Guaranteed. So actually, that gives you a percentage savings of a hundred and thirty-four thousand. I'd like to get that.
Did anybody have a question on that?
I think everybody's got it on their computers today.
And Greg, I noticed you perked up on that. I'll forward you an email on the Honeywell information for you. Sue, any que- any questions, Sue?
No.
Okay, excellent. Um, that was it for A and F, right? You're all done? Excellent. All right, we'll jump to HR.
That'd be quick and easy next Monday, our next meeting, more policies.
Certainly going to be kept busy this year and next year, it looks like.
Yes.
Planning and Communications, Diane?
Um, we met tonight. Um, we have nominations for the Dream Keeper and Cornerstone Awards that we'll bring forward to you in non-public. We're gonna try to set a time in maybe May or June where we can meet as a board to discuss our board plans. I know we touched on that briefly in our meeting, um, two weeks ago or, you know, three weeks ago. So we want to go forward with that. Also looking to resume work with Philip on, uh, GTV program in preparation for Deliberative. Uh, we weren't able to do anything prior to vacation, but we're looking to redirect, um, and move forward on that. And also, it's time to do the voters' guides and the guides for, um...
I interrupted real quick, Diane. Sue, we're getting feedback. I don't know if your TV volume is on? Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Um, if anybody has any ideas or contributions for those guides or whatnot, please let us know and feel free to participate. That's it. Our next meeting is first Monday in February.
Thank you. All right, C and E. The 10th. At seven o'clock, the SAU Office Superintendent's report.
Um, I just have a couple of things. We have substitute training tomorrow, and we have lots of college kids home, so we get a, the advantage of the month of January to have college students helping us out substituting. So we're training, um, we have eighteen substitutes coming in tomorrow for training. Wednesday, we have our monthly fingerprinting session, so for the public, if anybody needs to be fingerprinted tomorrow, Wednesday is the day. I also just want to notify the board, we have a nurse, a student nurse coming aboard. She'll make the agenda, but since it's not voted on. Kimberly Caudill will be working here at the high school with Jennifer Wilson, and she has a nurse intern. And just, um, as we mentioned earlier, Keith had said, I sent a letter to Hillsborough County...
Hillsborough County House Corrections, yeah?
House Corrections. Um, the SAU has been painted, it's done. Um, anybody wants to stop by, it looks really great. I will tell you, for what we paid, it was a value that you can't imagine. It was a, they were there for about twenty days, um, almost the whole month, um, on the average of about ten guys on a daily basis. Um, we paid for paint and we paid for lunch, so it was under a hundred dollars a day for lunch and soda for them. Um, so for a hundred dollars a day, we got ten laborers, and fairly skilled. They took some walls down, put up some new sheetrocking, fixed, um, uh, where wood was missing. I mean, they really did a nice job. The SAU looks great, I have to tell you. So, um, again, a great opportunity. I believe Jerry Aggett has already been in contact with them to potentially have them come in Goffstown for the summer for some hours, um, a couple of days to do some painting and some yard work outside, because for under a hundred dollars, you can't beat the value. Um, and they, I think they enjoyed working with us, and we enjoyed working with them, so...
Honestly, they were extremely well behaved and respectful and very nice to, uh, talk with.
It was definitely a good re- good, uh, good situation, so that's all I have.
Well, we've been on vacation.
It's been, yeah.
All right, we need to jump up to the development of our 2011 warrant articles, uh, 'cause we do need to have those to, uh, available for the budget hearing on January 12th. So, we had, um, six warrant articles, do we, we jumped on five?
Yep, we still have six.
Okay.
We just need to decide which ones. Um, Article one is your budget, so that will get filled in, um, after the budget committee makes a decision. Article three, Article two is, yeah, that's Article two. Article three is your, um, collective bargaining agreement, which, um, you'll ratify tonight, and you'll get that cost, so that number will go in that. Article four, the board has to decide whether they want to keep that in there or not, and that would be an article that should Article three fail, which is the collective bargaining agreement for the support staff, um, that, to be able to go back and have another meeting. And so that's something the board needs to determine, whether they want to keep that in there or take that out.
Why don't we, while we're running down them, what is the thoughts on that from the board? I, I personally don't see where we would take advantage of it because of the cost and the requirements in order to order a special meeting on and a vote. I don't see where we'd ever do it, and I'm not sure we should be putting it out there to confuse the voters on, on any matters. I think we need to keep our ballot, our warrant articles. Yes, Sue?
I'll make a motion to remove Article four.
Okay, do I have a second to that motion, please? Seconded by Philip. Everybody, feel free to chime in with your thoughts. Let's, anybody have any... Jenny?
My thoughts is if we wait till next year, and, and I think it's a good idea to take it out, but I think we need, before we make the decision, also to know that, um, next year, we'll have the teachers on the ballot, so we could potentially be having two in the same year, which is also not such a good idea, so...
Yeah, we are, the contract that we're coming forward with for the support staff is a one-year contract, which, um, pretty much just kept them exactly where they are this year, so... I think if the voters don't turn that down, I, I'm not sure we can come up with another number to bring forward to them anyway, right away. Laurie?
If Article three fails, wouldn't it just end up in Evergreen status?
No, 'cause it's, it's grandfathered, because the contract was written before the Evergreen clause, so they'd be working without a contract.
So what would happen?
They would stay with the exact same benefits, with the exception of one. Um, they have longevity pay, and that intentionally is expiring at the end of the current contract, so they would lose their longevity pay, but everything else would stay the same.
Keith?
Yes?
I just feel that, considering the unknowns with budget and that, I know, a special election cost at a minimum around $6,000, I don't think it's an expense we should incur.
All right, yeah, I, I think several of us will agree on that. The nods around the table, I think, are saying we understand that. Any other questions, discussions? All in favor of the motion, which is to remove Article four? Uh, Sue, how would you like to vote?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes unanimously, 9-0-0. Article four is pending removal.
Article five is the sum to put into the capital reserve fund, and I believe at the last meeting we talked about $200,000, so we'll insert that number in there.
Unless somebody wants to make a motion to make any additional changes to that, 'cause we had...
Is it wise to put that in there, Sue?
I spoke on last year of my reasons why not to put it in there, and, um, to my dismay, the chair of the Budget Committee decided to ask my personal opinion when I was there representing the board and kind of used it against me, so I, I'm not gonna speak to it this, this time around.
The motion, or, excuse me, the, the ballot question is only to permit a s- a sum definite with a cap on it. Doesn't mean that we're going to do it.
No, we'd have to vote again to actually do it.
It simply gives us the opportunity. We have to look at the end of the year and make a decision then. This simply affords the board the opportunity to do it for planning in the future.
At the end of the year, the board could say, "I want to put $200,000," or the board could say, "I want to put nothing."
Right.
And where we do have space needs in that school, it's going to be, it's feasible.
Any other comments? Final call for any motions? Warrant article stays as we decided last time, up to, I think, we've said up to $200,000, correct?
Up to, yep. An appropriate up to the sum of $200,000.
That's it. All right, Article six.
Article six is, um, the article to change the Bartlett Elementary School Facilities Capital Reserve Fund to the Elementary School Facilities Capital Reserve Fund. Um, and we had put that on the warrant last year. I think it was confusing to people, it did not pass. The board talked about doing it again, because we really have two projects, one at Bartlett and one at Maple, and so to be able to use the money for both, it may create more support. I think the board should consider whether it's one more thing to try to explain in a difficult budget year. Should we focus on the budget or focus on that? Money-wise, it doesn't matter to us where the money gets allocated. I don't know if there's...
Hank?
I'd like to move to take it out.
I have a motion to remove it. Article five, I mean, Article six, seconded by Jenny.
On the basis, it was confusing last year and it's gonna be confusing this year.
I, 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 I'm gonna agree. I, we didn't have the energy or the time last year. We spent our time working on our budget and selling our budget, um, and we didn't have the opportunity to really sell that. And unfortunately, I think this year, we have a couple other, um, warrant articles that we need to exert our energy on. I don't think we'd have the time to properly sell it and explain it to the public.
I agree.
Anybody else have any comments?
People, people are gonna look at it and think we're asking for something, and we're not, other than permission to just change the...
Truly, if we do both projects, we're gonna spend the same amount of money. Whether, this amount only can be allocated towards the Bartlett project versus both of them, I think in the end, right now, it's not gonna make a major significant difference for us.
I don't either, it's, I don't think it's, uh...
All right, all right. All in favor of removing Article six, as the motion requested? That passes unanimously?
Yes, it does.
No, stop, um, Sue's voting yes. I, uh, and we have against. We do have one against, it's Philip. Motion passes 8-1-0. The Article six has now been removed. Um, before we jump away from this, though, we do have the opportunity to change the order of the articles, with the exception of the first two, which, um, according to statute, have to be in that particular order. And then Article three, right now, will be our support staff contract. Article four will now be up to $200,000 in the reserve fund. Does anybody want to make a motion to change the order of the warrant articles? Now, all right, seeing none. They will stay in the order they are being presented.
Hi, Keith, I do have one question.
Sure.
Time, um, I, I've seen it in different places, at nine and different, and 10. So just, can I do, what is the confirmed?
Deliberative is 10.
10 o'clock. Okay.
10 and 10. All righty, we can actually jump to policy JKAA, which is the use of restraint. Um, it's actually here for second read. Do I have any motions?
I can make a move to approve it.
Okay, do I have a second to approve Policy JKAA, seconded by Jen?
Um, again, most of this is strictly from the RSA. There's only a small portion that's actually our wording, which is on page two, is pretty much how we're going to do it. But otherwise than that, we don't really have any control over most of it.
It's mostly an update to follow to coincide with the update on the RSAs in the state. Anybody have any questions? All in favor of the motion? And Sue, how would you like to vote?
Abstain.
All right, motion passes 8-0-1, with Sue Tremblay abstaining. All right, we have the 2011, 2012 draft calendar. We've had a chance to look at it, um, it was presented to us in December. Does anybody have any comments, questions, concerns? Anything you want to share additional on it, Stacy?
No, I would just, I, I would ask the board just to hold off voting on it until at least the next meeting. Dunbarner or New Boston has not seen it yet.
Okay.
Because you've had your second, your next meeting before they've had their first, so, um, they haven't seen it yet, so I'm just looking for if anybody has feedback or thoughts or concerns about anything, and then I'll bring it back to your next meeting after I've had their feedback as well.
Okay. All righty. Why don't we do ratification, support staff contract first, I'm gonna change the order a little bit.
Do you want to go into non-public to talk about the contract? Probably don't want to talk about that.
Yeah, we probably shouldn't, because of the fact that it has not been ratified yet by, uh, the support staff. Their meeting is next week, I believe?
Actually, I don't know the date. Um, you can go into non-public briefly and come back out and go back in.
No, we can, we'll actually, we can wait, 'cause we have to go to non-public for the Dream Keeper and Cornerstone, so why don't we do the review of the Budget Committee's decision? Currently, the number that's going into the budget hearing is approximately $2.5 million less than what our recommended budget was at this point. Several of the cuts were made to numerous lines. Some of those cuts, unfortunately, are contractual. For example, to take away the funding for, uh, professional development, we're contracted obligated to provide that. They made cuts of 30% to oil lines and natural gas lines. We have to heat our buildings, so we cannot actually take the cuts in those areas. So we, I, I did ask Stacy to put together some numbers from the administration of where we'd have to really make some of the cuts, because some of the cuts that they've recommended from the Budget Committee may not be appropriate or may not be feasible for us to actually do because of our needs to heat the buildings and different contractual obligations. So Stacy's actually come up with a list to run by with us.
So, um, Keith asked me to look at where, what I thought was reasonable cuts, what I thought was, were cuts that we could make that the Budget Committee was looking at. And for example, um, they cut contractual obligations for professional development. By contract, we're obligated to pay $150 for per teacher for professional development, and we have to budget $30,000 for teacher tuition. And so those line items were cut. Line items for added district tuition were cut. Those are based on students right now that are out of district that we will have an obligation to pay their tuition and transportation. So I had to take those out of the picture, because clearly we can't make those cuts and had to cut other things. So I'm gonna review the list, I'm, I'm gonna go over it in general, um, so you have an idea. But I, I do want to preface this with the fact that, um, since I've been in this role, we can't forget that over the last two years, we have significantly cut the budget. We have had staff reductions. Um, we ha- we cut nine positions in the '09-10 school year, and we cut nine positions this school year. So we've already cut eighteen positions out of the budget before this year. So, um, I think it's important. Previously, two years ago, we cut 25% of all of our supply lines, 50% of our dues and fees lines. So when you look at things historically, it doesn't always work that way, because if you look at historically, the, when we cut 25% of our supply lines, we barely skimped by. I mean, we were, you know, borrowing from Peter to pay Paul to, to make things happen, to get the supplies we needed. So it's important to recognize that fact. So we have already cut, um, eighteen positions out of the budget. Those would be professional staff or support staff, a variety of both. So I went through the budget with the administrators, um, all of the principals, um, and several assistant principals, looking at, um, where do we start? And I do want to preface this with, um, I don't support these cuts at all. So I want to just say that clearly, that when you see what this looks like, um, I, I can't support these cuts, because this will, um, have, have a pretty significant effect on the school district in Goffstown. So, um, let me just go through, to start with, um, the staffing. Um, when I look at what staff would get cut, um, that won't affect, keeps us within our legal obligation. Um, for example, I can't cut a teacher at Bart- at Maple Lab Elementary School, because our class sizes are already at the max. So to cut a teacher in second grade would bring our class size numbers over 30, which you can't do by law. So these keep us within the legal parameters of what we can do. So this is just staffing. At Bartlett, we would be looking to cut the part-time library para educator. District-wide, we would be looking to reduce para educators to working only a school day. Right now, we have some that have extended days to cover buses. We would have to figure that out and stagger para educators. Um, some might come in later, some might leave earlier. In effect, that really reduces retirement. It's a savings of $26,000. Um, district-wide, I don't, some of these positions, I don't have, like, what the position would be. One administrator, two and a half tech staff, the school resource officer that we agreed with the police department to put in our budget. So that would be actually a cut to the police department, because they have not funded that position. Um, the elimination of the entire gap program, that's our adult ed program. Three custodians. We would be cutting a halftime music teacher at the elementary school and eliminating the strings program at the elementary level. At the high school, we would be reducing a library para educator, a halftime special ed teacher, the EMT, so we would be having just a school nurse at the high school, as opposed to a nurse and an EMT. We would be eliminating the alt-to-suspension program. That includes a teacher and an aide. That's our in-school suspension program. We would be reducing a high school secretary, um, a technology teacher at the high school, and five just general teachers. I don't know what those teachers would be, an English teacher, a math teacher, um, five teachers in general. Um, we would be eliminating a guidance counselor. At Glen Lake, we would reduce a kindergarten teacher. Um, we'd also replace the nurse. Instead of having a nurse, we'd bring in an EMT with, for a savings of about $25,000. Um, at Maple Lab, we'd be looking to reduce the part-time library para, and who's also the special ed secretary, so that's a full-time position. We'd also look to reduce a special ed teacher at Maple Lab. At Mountain View, um, we'd look to reduce the EMT, again, just keeping a nurse on staff, as opposed to a nurse and an EMT. Two world language teachers, so we would eliminate world language at the middle school, which is not something that's required by law. Um, the library para educator, um, that the board added back, we cut it this year, added it back in. Um, and if you did notice, I cut all the library para educators. And then two general para educators, um, at Mountain View Middle School. In addition to those cuts, um, there's lots of little items, um, basically all the assemblies, all the field trips, all technology, smart boards, computers. I cut all library books by 50%, so, um, our library budgets, um, for just general textbooks would be cut by 50% at each school. Cutting late buses, cutting NWEA testing, that's the map testing we do with our kids every year. Eliminating summer programming, our summer success program for regular ed students. Let's see, all kinds of outside landscaping, um, all of our furniture lines, most of our testing lines, all of our transportation for field trip lines. Let's see.
I've cut some of the multimedia books as well.
Yep, yeah, 50% of media, that's the library books. Um, eliminating the evaluate program here at the high school. Um, eliminating the purchase of the pre-calc books was, uh, something we were looking to do. Replace, eliminating any, um, new maintenance. So we talked about doing the library carpet, eliminating that. Textbook adoption, $112,000 for the high school textbook adoption, which we've now put off one year already. Textbook adoption, a hundred and twelve thousand dollars for the high school textbook adoption, which we've now put off one year already. All assemblies. Smart boards. Replacement of the gym floor at Mountain View. And then I had ninety-three thousand dollars left, so I would just say that's a general reduction in supplies, generally. As you can see there, there are some pretty significant cuts to get to the two point three million dollars.
One of the things that seems to be absent from the list is the impact. I mean, it's.
Thirty-six positions.
It's thirty-six positions.
But, but in order to fully appreciate what that means, you need to look at what's left. Not just what you're doing with a blade. And I, I thought that the presentation that the district put on for the board and for the Budget Committee did a pretty good job of addressing where we were at from a numbers standpoint. Maybe the thing to do is to create a new illustration that documents not where we were at after two, three budget cycles of cuts, but where we will find ourselves and the impact that that will have on the district as a whole.
Janine?
I think this amount taken out of our budget is absolutely crazy and absolutely irresponsible. I would like to know where the Budget Committee was when we did our presentations, that they think that we can take things out that are contractual, that they heard the explanations of when we gave the explanations and went through the budget line by line. I don't know where they were or what they were listening, that they think that because they say that now we can take contractual items out, they're giving information to the voters that's completely erroneous. We cannot take those things out of the budget. Whether they want to or whether they think it's a good idea, the voters in this town need to realize that we have state laws, we have federal laws, we have any S and C requirements. If we don't have an accredited school, you might as well just kiss your tax dollars goodbye because what you're paying is worthless.
Also, it also affects the tuition rate. We have to deal with.
And the tuition rate. And that goes, the N S and C goes to Mountain View and to the high school. Some of these things, liability. Where are we on a liability standpoint if we have limited police, no police coverage and limited medical coverage in our schools? It's irresponsible. And I think as a voter in Goffstown for the past forty years minus a couple college, early marriage years, this town has voted to keep their tax base on property taxes. Everyone who's out there has, over the years, voted in such a way that we have to rely on property taxes for our tax base. And you can't have it both ways. You can't say, you know, we have to nitpick and cut everything out of our taxes and also vote that property taxes are the only way we're gonna pay our taxes. People need to stand up for their vote and know what they're voting about. And I think that it's completely irresponsible for the Budget Committee to have made these cuts. And it's even more irresponsible for us to even consider any of them. And I hope that the voters will really get the knowledge from the school board's information that's really information that they can rely on instead of the G R A's information and the Budget Committee's because they're not presenting to you the information that you need.
In fairness to the, to the Budget Committee, they came forward with a presentation that at least suggested the notion that none of these things needed to happen. It occurred in a forum in which there was no longer the opportunity to have a dialogue because no questions were permitted. It was during the process of deliberation, as opposed to the process of question and answer. Now, there had been a series of meetings prior to that during which the Budget Committee had the opportunity to engage and involve in discourse and ask questions and receive answers. Once you entered that deliberative portion of their process, there was a kibosh put on that. Even though there may have been questions on the table, it was at the will of somebody present at the table to answer or to not answer.
That, that didn't help me with anything, Phil, because.
Well, I understand that. But, but our, what we need to do is to follow through on what our objective and mission is. And I think the superintendent fairly framed where we found ourselves at the beginning of the budget or at the end of our budget process this year, which was to present a budget that we believed achieved the goals of the district, which is to provide an education. And when the Budget Committee looked at, for instance, the town's budget, they looked at it and said, okay, can you put some things off? That's really, I don't think, the message that we got back. We got back a cut these things instead of, you know, we know that you put off a textbook acquisition last year. Could you put it off for another year? Because this year's really not a good year. And that would have been a thoughtful and meaningful way to describe a way to reduce a budget and in fact, by a significant amount. Now, it's not something that would have been palatable or pleasant or easy for us to do, but it's something that with a little bit of thought and foresight might have made more sense than to say, okay, there are two point four million dollars in cuts. The landscape isn't important to us, just get rid of it. So what we're faced with is trying to consider something that nobody ever had the opportunity to engage on or respond to. There wasn't a question, well, if we do this and if we look at a cut in this area, what will the impact be and can it even happen? Because if we cut in this area and we can't do it, or you can't do it, more importantly, the board can't do it or the administration can't do it for any number of very good reasons, then it probably doesn't make sense to remove those dollars. That didn't happen. The opportunity for that to happen existed. It didn't happen because all of that occurred in deliberation as opposed to question and answer.
Well, my thought about this was, number one, I think we presented the budget twice. That in, three times. So the information was given. And number two, I think their process is broken if they can't get the information they need to make an informed decision. Like, I have never heard of this deliberative mode. Most people sit and talk about something and they get the information, they talk about it and they make rational decisions and informed decisions afterwards. So that doesn't fly with me.
And I think that's what we need to do now. Instead of dealing with an edict, we need to address needs. And I think we've already done that. And so our goal needs to continue to be to educate the constituents of our community, the people who voted for us. And make sure that they understand what is left of the process, that their voice needs to be heard and can be heard and should make a difference, notwithstanding the fact that public comment has apparently not been well-received in the past. But, fascinating to hear and there. But the most important thing is for people to continue to educate themselves. That's something that we have to do and encourage people to continue to participate in this process because we aren't at the end of it. We simply are at a point where one group of people has deliberated and reached a conclusion. And the deliberations are available, should anybody choose to watch them. The evidence, I think, comes in the presentation that the district did, that the superintendent put together and helps to explain and understand what the board believes it will take to accomplish its objectives in the eleven-twelve year.
And I guess another thing that I don't understand is how can you, in good conscience, a tax increase that may be a couple hundred dollars, and I'm not minimizing a couple of hundred dollars, but how can you use that and say, you know, my taxes are gonna go up this amount of money? And that's what it is. And therefore, I'm gonna put thirty-six people out of work in health insurance because I don't wanna pay this amount of money. You know, two hundred dollars more on my tax bill per month. But I'm willing to put thirty-six people out of work and without insurance and benefits.
You're saying two hundred dollars a year, I assume.
Pardon me?
You said two hundred dollars a month. I assumed you meant two hundred dollars a year.
Yeah, I, I don't even understand how people in good conscience can, I mean, shame on you.
Before we go to the next two, Sue, are you still with us, right? Sue? Sue, did we lose you? I'm gonna try to reconnect you real quick, so. I have to find a couple of numbers. We're down to scrap paper here.
Is there a redone? She called in?
No, I had called her, but she didn't get through the extension.
Should be redone, first, up there, right there.
I lost you.
I know. I, I thought we heard grumbling, so Sue's back with us now. All right, we're gonna actually go to Jen and then to Lori.
You, you talk about educating basically our consumers, our, our tax base. And I think that this list, I'd like to see this list of cuts go public because this is a real picture of what could possibly happen, what would likely happen. I know that the board has received an email asking for specific, what would it look like? And I think that this would be a perfect example to send out so that people could see what, because not everybody understands what is a contractual obligation as, you know, as the Budget Committee, they didn't know what is a contractual obligation and what isn't. So I think that giving this kind of information.
Yes, yes, they did. They've known it for as long as they've been serving. I mean, really, in fairness, that's, that's just, the community may not know.
Did I interrupt you, Mr. Penney?
No, you didn't. Let's keep it simple. Go ahead, Jen, please. I thought it was, it was an interruption.
However, I think it would be a fair piece of information to put out that it could likely look like this. And maybe even then provide a frame of reference as to what would be left. You know, this would leave one librarian per school, per day. You know, or, you know, something like that. Just so that people can understand that after two years and eighteen cuts already, this is what the picture would look like.
Lori?
What is the difference between the cuts that they're doing and what our default budget is?
It's about one point six million dollars more.
The Budget Committee's recommendation is one point six million dollars below our default budget approximately.
Okay.
Yes.
And the other question I had was the, the pairs that we're supposed to be getting coming from the other districts so that it has a tax value of zero, having that factor into the lower budget that's been presented by the Budget Committee.
Revenues are gonna go down, Lori. The lower the cost, the lower the revenue. It's as simple as that.
But the fact is that we have to find them, I mean, we have an obligation to provide those five para educators who are sending districts.
Well, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, so if, if.
With the fact that they're coming, but then they're getting paid, does that make any sort of impact on the change in the budget?
It's a wash, really. They're shown as an expense, but then it's shown on the revenue side as well that they're being paid for by New Boston and Dunbarner. So that's not really, can't be used as part of the reduction. It's a wash in the end.
Well, because I know like those have to be in our budget, but does that end up taking away from something else because we have to have it there? Or the fact that it gets paid means we can still feel right?
If you, let's, let's, let's come up with a number. If you take a hundred thousand dollars out of a twenty million dollar budget and then take a hundred thousand dollars out of an eighteen million dollar budget, what's left reduces the amount that you recover in terms of revenue because you, you're having a greater impact on the total budget when you reduce it. So it does have a, it does have an impact. But it has an impact on the revenue side. Even though the, the cost itself, sort of the, the number of people in and their cost is the same number of people out. So if, if it costs you a hundred grand, you get a hundred grand back. But that would reduce what you would be able to collect in terms of revenue.
Right, it would lower both of them.
Right.
Any other questions, comments? Diane?
I've already said it. I do think that the budget we put forward to start with, I think we made a very good, straightforward effort at not asking for more than we really needed and trying to be responsible to hear the cuts that you're talking about, Stacy. To me, the requirement or the recommendation of the Budget Committee is tremendously concerning to me. It seems colossally irresponsible as far as management. A lot of things go through my mind as, as I hear it. I think about the library, I think of my own experience in the library. And as their staff now, there are multiple occasions where they're depending on volunteer work or where they are just understaffed. And to consider reducing that, I just don't think that's any way to run a district. I think about our accreditation. We all want our schools to be accredited. Furthermore, I think about the area agreement. And, and we're in the customer service industry, not just, not just to our students, but we have two towns that contribute significantly to our budget and on our revenue side that could just as well, when the area agreement is up, decide to go to better supported districts that are, and they're not, I wouldn't blame them for not wanting to send their children to schools that are not accredited, that are in ill repair, that are not well-staffed, that have leaky rooms and whatnot, where a different alternative exists. And, and I think that's something that, that we need to consider. I look at some of the rationale and I, the past expenses not justifying increase on things such as oil. We calculated that based on what the projected cost per gallon was going to be, not based on, on past expenses. And it was a furniture line, bookshelves, past expenses not justifying. Well, that's because the bookshelves were thirty years. It's been thirty years since some of these bookshelves have been replaced. And then I'll stop now. But I noticed something that's not on the list that, that perhaps we need to look at is, is the co-curricular, the athletics. I'm not hearing anything there as far as a pay-to-play or what we could do to, to bring athletics. It seems like everything else. Am I wrong? Did I just not hear?
Correct, so there was nothing on athletics.
Okay.
And I, I based that on the decision of the board previously to not go to pay to play, so.
Yeah, okay.
And I'm not being directed to look that direction at this point to see.
Your Excel sheet is wonderful. Can we get that on the website? What, Ray, Ray's?
Oh, this spreadsheet I did?
Yeah. Oh, was it? I thought it was from Ray.
Oh, there's two, you, the budget cuts I just did?
No. No, what Ray had done?
Um, yeah, we'll need to look at that.
Okay.
Before we post it.
Okay.
Yeah, because that hasn't gone public. That's not a public document at this point.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other comments? Sue, Jenny? Sue, um, Jenny?
I think it has to be noted also that the first year that we started in this process with the economic decline, we took huge cuts out of our budget, thinking will be helpful, because yes, you know, there are issues, and we can't do that every year and still have, be responsible to our students and their needs, our schools' needs. But we're being asked to do that every year, and our budget that they're taking, asking us to take out of is, you know, like, the smaller budget, and then the smaller budget, and then the smaller budget. And you really can't keep doing that over that many years and still come out with a program that's going to meet the state standards, the federal standards, the N S and C standards, that are all really important. I, I don't think the town has those kinds of requirements, this is a whole different situation. It's a very difficult to understand budget, but it's not like rules and laws that we make up, these are things that are given to us that in our deliberations on the budget, we have to keep in mind those things, so that our students have what they're required to have, not just things that we've decided, you know, we haven't made these laws, they're laws that have been passed down to us to uphold, and so that's my, I think, I think people need to know that.
Thank you, Stacy?
I just, if I can add to Jenny's statement about the things that we put in jeopardy, I'd also add that as part of the new adequacy requirements, in order for us to get adequacy aid, we had to do inputs and outputs, one was, how do we meet the requirements for an adequate education? And so we spent, I met with principals this summer, and we spent days having to document that. If we don't meet an adequate education, we put in jeopardy our adequacy aid, which is about $7 million, if you don't meet those requirements. So again, that's just another piece of the puzzle that I think people don't always understand when you cut administrators, when you cut these people, you're no longer maybe meeting those state requirements, which could put adequacy aid in jeopardy as well, so.
I'll personally chime in on it. I, I do not feel, I cannot support these cuts, I do not feel they'd be educationally sound personally. I think it would be a disservice to our community and to our students to make these cuts into our budget. As most of you have said, we, we put forth a very lean budget. We did a zero-based budgeting, and we only asked for what we really felt we needed to do this year to keep the current standard of education, we're not looking to move it forward, we weren't looking to move technology forward very much. In actuality, when you start comparing us to other communities, we're, we're going to be losing the lead we have in technology. And I think we're also made significant cuts in our maintenance lines that over time, and we learned this when we went to do the renovation at the high school here, you don't keep up a maintenance, it's going to cost you more. It's being penny-wise, pound foolish in the end. So I'm very concerned with the cuts on the maintenance side as well. We didn't have very many projects, but we had a few in order to not fall further behind than we are in our maintenance projects. So with that, I, I'll support mostly what Diane and Jenny shared, I won't be redundant on it, before we close. Sue, you're still there?
I am definitely here.
Any comments you want to make on the budget before we go, move on to non-public?
Just that, in my personal opinion, there was not a lot of thought by a majority of the budget committee in these reductions. They were presented to them several pages long, and they were voted on within an hour. So I don't know how they can sit there and justify that they worked so hard to come up with these numbers. One individual did, the rest of them just followed along.
Okay. All righty, before we go into non-public, is there any other legal business that a board member needs to bring forward to the budget, to the board? See and none? We actually have to go into non-public for two matters, the award of the Dream Keeper and Cornerstone Awards, we have to review the nominations, and we also have to ratify support staff contract. So I have a motion to go into non-public by Jenny, seconded by Hank. I'm going to do a head roll call, make sure we go into non-public. Kent, yes?
Yes.
Philip?
Yes.
Sue, going to non-public?
Absolutely.
This contract, in essence, has only allowed two things in increases. One is to continue the longevity pay that was due to expire at the end of this year's contract, and for some safety issues for our custodial staff in order to help reduce injuries that we're having with our staff. If this did not pass, the support staff would be operating without a contract, and the cost of the district would only be $10,630 less. This is a one-year contract, at which time we're going to start renegotiating it in next March. We felt this was certainly a Band-Aid to get us through what was, probably would be a stalemate and something the, the public would not support. So anybody else have any comments they want to make on it before we go to the vote?
All in favor of the motion?
Yes.
Sue, that passes unanimously, 9-0-0. I imagine next week, the union, the GESS union should be meeting on it to decide whether they will ratify it as well. If they ratify it as well, it will become warrant article number three on our ballot. All righty.
I would just like to say that it's a very fair contract as far as the taxpayers go, and that the support staff is really taking nothing in addition this year to keep it pretty much flat-based to work with the community. I think they should be commended for that.
They, they certainly made significant sacrifices to the community, they were really doing it because they wanted to save as many jobs as they could potentially save. To them, it's actually going to be a net pay decrease to them, once you consider their costs of insurance increases that will have to come out of their paychecks. So this is actually, each one of them is going to take home less money most likely after they have their benefits taken out of their paycheck.
So all in favor of the motion? No, we already passed it, sorry, 9-0-0. I guess I'm not the sharpest model tonight. All righty, can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Got to reaffirm the vote you made in non-public.
Yes.
Oh, yes, we do need to affirm the nominations that we've put forward for the Dream Keeper and Cornerstone Award to be presented at a deliberative session by Hank, seconded by Kent. All in favor of the motion?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, 9-0-0. Thank you for correcting me. Motion to adjourn?
Yes, please.
Can I have a second to that? By Hank, all in favor?
Twitter.
That, that passes 9-0-0, Sue?
Yes.
All right, Susan, thank you for...
Feel better, Sue.
Thank you.
And we hope that your health will allow you to come back shortly in attendant person.
No, 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 my health improves, I'm going to Florida.
I guess I wasn't that optimistic, Sue, I thought you were staying.
Happy New Year.
I'm 47th there today.
Well, I heard you made it to Maryland before you had to turn back.
It was...
Oh, don't worry.
Yeah, wait, wait, 38, December 26th.
I think she hung up on you.
I think she did.
Well, hopefully, you don't have that effect on people.
Thank you, Susan.